Good evening and welcome to the November first, two thousand and twenty-three regular meeting of the Holland City Council. Mayor Nathan Box and I'm calling this meeting to order. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Byrd.
Vreeman.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
Corbin.
Here.
Sol.
Here.
Arnshorst.
Here.
Hookstra.
Here.
Raymond.
Here.
Mayor Box.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Wonderful, thank you. We're going to begin this evening's meeting as we have for many years, first with an opening prayer. This evening was to be Mr. Byrd, but he's not here this evening, and so Mr. Vreeman has graciously volunteered to lead the prayer, followed immediately by the Pledge of Allegiance, and we would invite you to join us if you're so inclined.
If you'd pray with me, please. Lord, we come before you at the end of this day, and for many of us, it's the change of our workday. And so we thank you for sustaining us through our work, through our play, through our volunteering. We would put now this time before you that we would give our best attention and our care and our, that our eyes can see what it is you would have this community do. We stop this evening and we thank you for the service of Jay and Nikki and Dave, and how they have committed themselves to our community, and we ask your blessing upon them as they would now engage in different things throughout our community. We put now this meeting before you that we would be able to serve you well, and we thank you that we are part of it. And it is by your name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tim. Next item on our agenda are our consent agenda items. These are items that are continued, considered to be fairly routine, and they have been reviewed by council members as part of our council packet, and they will be enacted in one motion unless a member of the public or a member of council asked to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed in its regular order on the regular agenda. But before I ask that, Kathy, would you please review the consent agenda for us?
For A, absence excused. For B, approval of minutes, October eighteen, two thousand and twenty-three regular meeting. For C, written petitions and communications. Tax abatement PA one ninety-eight, LG Energy Solution, Michigan, eight seventy-five East Forty-Eighth Street. For D, city clerk claims filed against the city. For E, transportation services, approve Michigan Department of Transportation agreement for the Waverly Road and M forty intersection improvements. For F, transportation services, approve proposal from WSP for as-needed traffic engineering services. For G, transportation services, approve proposal from Fishbeck for as-needed services for stormwater activities. For H, parks and recreation, award bid for replacement heater exchanger at, heat exchanger at the police building. For I, finance, police operations, declare items as surplus, bicycles. For J, finance, annual adjustments of interest rates for certain special assessments. For K, treasurer, place delinquent ordinance violation invoices on winter two thousand and twenty-three property tax bills, adopt resolution. For L, public safety services, M Coles Public Safety Academy Assistance Program grant acceptance. For M, internal services, technology services, security operations center as a service.
Great. Thank you, Kathy. Is there any member of the public that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? Seeing none. Any member of council that would like to have an item removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda? None there either. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the consent agenda?
Move to approve consent agenda items.
Moved by Sol, is there support?
Support.
Support by Arnshorst, any discussion? Seeing none, Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Vreeman.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Corbin.
Yes.
Sol.
Yes.
Arnshorst.
Yes.
Hookstra.
Yes.
Raymond.
Yes.
Mayor Box.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda is public comment. As part of all of our public meetings for the city of Holland, we provide the opportunity for the public to come and speak to council. During our council meetings, your time is limited to five minutes. You can speak on any subject that you would like to. We ask that you keep the time to, to that five minutes. There are three lights in front of us. One light is green, one light is yellow, one light is red. Green light means you're doing well on time. Yellow light means you have one minute left, and the red light means that your time has expired, and we are strict about that. We ask that when you come to the microphone, you please state your name and your municipality, and each person is allowed to speak just one time. With that being said, is there anyone here who would like to address council? If so, please come forward. And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm John Shea. I live at two thirty-three West Twelfth Street in Holland. I want to just begin by saying more than three hundred and fifty-six thousand people in the U.S. have an out-of-hospital cardiac arrest in the United States every year. About sixty percent and maybe up to eighty percent of them die before reaching the hospital. I was one of those people that had a cardiac arrest a year and a week ago, and I am, as you can see, one of the lucky ones. One of the reasons I was lucky is that Jay Peters happened to just have taken a class from Steve Stegaman, and in hands-only CPR, and immediately applied that to me. So I spent seven days in the Meyer Heart Center. I was released with no restrictions whatsoever, and I'm truly one of the lucky people. Jay's heroism didn't stop that cold rainy day in October. He went on to spearhead a group called Heart Safe Holland, and they're with me tonight, I think, most of them, many of them.
Mr. Shea, would you just like, make sure that you speak into the microphone because people at home can't hear you otherwise.
Certainly. Thank you, Your Honor. Heart Safe Holland is an initiative to get us to proclaim a heart-safe community, and one of the centerpiece of that is to get fifteen percent of adults trained in hands-only CPR, the same technique that saved my life. So I'm in receipt of something from the American Heart Association called the Heart Safe Hero Award. It's being presented to Jay Peters in recognition of advancing the mission of the American Heart Association and emergency cardiovascular care through a courageous act in the effort to save a life. And if you don't mind, I'd like to hand that to him.
I think that we should, we ought to allow that this evening, definitely.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time?
Yes, please come forward. And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Mike Short. I live at eight-ten Myrtle, Holland, and I'm in Ward Four. For full disclosure, I am one of the two candidates running for Ward Four. But I come here not to speak about that. I come here to commend Nikki Arndhorst for the time that she has spent on council. So if you don't mind, I'd like to also acknowledge Jay and Dave. I know Nikki personally, and so because of that, I'm commending her, but I commend you both for your services well. Thank you. Nikki is the sitting member of City Council representing Ward Four from two thousand and nineteen until two thousand and twenty-three, uh, twenty twenty-three, twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three. Nikki has decided to step down when her four-year term ends. Prior to serving on City Council, she served a four-year term on the Board of Trustees of Park Township. She's been active in civic government for many years. My introduction to civ, city government began about the time Nikki was assuming her elected role on the City Council in two thousand and nineteen. About a year and a half later, I first met Nikki. This was at a time leading up to the approval of the Uniform Development Ordinance for, or UDO for short. My late wife Donna and I were concerned after receiving the yellow upzoning postcard. You see, I live in Holland City Limits, but I'm in Alleghen County. I'm at the southwest end of town. Farmlands are still present in Lake Town Township just beyond the southwestern limits of the city. The rural atmosphere of our home and the UDO pro, proposal of gentle densification were in conflict for us. We got involved in the UDO approval process, but Donna wrote a letter to Nikki, and Nikki replied, offering to come and speak with us. We decided to accept the offer, and Nikki came and met with us in our home with two other couples. Listening to our concerns and attending numerous council meetings, we realized through Nikki's comments that Nikki had heard our concerns and was representing some of them at the council meetings. I recognize this as a sign of a good leader, one who will represent those who live in her ward. I came here to commend her for the four years that she's served on the City Council. She gained my respect in this way. I promise, and of course, I am running for council, I promise that if I'm elected to serve in Ward Four, I will continue to listen to all the people in Ward Four who I would represent and provide the style of leadership that Nikki Arndhorst has provided. Thank you, Nikki.
Thank you. And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Carol Myers, one oh nine West Twelfth Street. I want to thank Jay Peters for having been our faithful councilmember for so long, and also to mention David Hookstra, who's been here, I think, even a bit longer perhaps than Jay. But being a member of Jay's ward, he has served us faithfully, and most of you may know, we have a park because of council, but particularly because of Jay and with the support of Dave. The rest of you have all turned over since we did that, but it was a wonderful private-public partnership, and it wouldn't have happened without our faithful councilman, Jay Peters. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council? Please come forward. Please state your name and municipality for the record.
My name is Brian Everett, and I live on Twelfth Street, and I'm a member of Ward Two. You might remember me from a couple weeks ago. I came to talk to you about a proposal that the arts community brought to the lakefront development projects. Since that two weeks, I've learned some information that I find both interesting and a little disheartening. As I talked with the members of my group that are still willing to make this major investment in Holland, I was informed that at no point in the process did anyone from council and from the mayor on down talk to these people. The only people they talked to was the representatives that you put in, in place, the, was it Freeland Group that, who ran the, all right, I'm at a loss here. The, the group that, that was your council in this, that ran the project, and they informed our people, they're the ones that informed our people, that they would not, we shouldn't even bring a project because it did not meet the criteria, even though it was a major fundraiser. The fact that it did not get to council is a problem for me. If this is a major project, it's a once-in-a-lifetime commitment for the city of Holland, it could change our trajectory for decades, because a performing arts center has been needed in this town for decades. And it bothers me that nobody reached out to talk to them. They were willing to make a major commitment. I think they deserved the consultation with members of this council who have the vote. The consultants are not the people we elected to make this decision. You are. And I would love to know how many of you, if, if my information is wrong, I would love to know it. I would love to at some point find out how many of you, if any, met with these people and knew of the project before today, or before, two weeks ago when I brought it out. Because every time, everybody I talked to in Holland says, we knew nothing about this project. It was never discussed in the city of Holland. And when we started this project, it was all about, we're going to have a community-wide discussion about what's best for the city of Holland. And like I said, after waiting thirty years for a performing arts center, I think the discussion is necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Anne Henrickson. During April Faith Month, Reverend Austin Krutz spoke at public comment about the unlawful prohibiting actions of separation of church and state. These are legal statements made by lawyers in arguing against expressing religious beliefs and actions in the marketplace of business and community interaction. The United States Constitution prohibits this. I've spoken about this before to the City Council, but it has been ignored. What I would like to see from the Holland City Council two thousand and twenty-three, after November seventh election, is reform to all departments by eradicating the use of this guidance of separation of church and state, which in the past four years has silenced freedom of speech of our religious expression. Here is the evidence. Anti-discrimination ordinance amendment ignored. This DEI ordinance was passed in two thousand and twenty, inserting and defining sexual orientation, gender identity, and expression for housing and employment and accommodation. The troubling piece is accommodations. Religious ministries who house and help the homeless felt this as a threat to their biblical values of operation. Lawyers drew up an amendment to the ordinance that would clearly state their specific protection from any possible punitive damages. A councilman suggested it to the council, this amendment to be added to the ordinance. Mayor Box tabled the idea because of the late hour. Citizens came in repeatedly requesting the amendment be considered. Mayor Box told the council not to worry, because the city attorney, Ron Vanderveen, would address the matter. Basically, he said the ordinance was legally sound and complete. No additional protections for religious expression would be added. Collin Park Banshell stage, two thousand and twenty-two. Two churches planted a worship time in Collin Park Banshell. They completed the form necessary to reserve the stage. The clerk refused it because it was religious worship, and that it is not allowed because of separate, separation of church and state. The pastor questioned the legitimacy of the rejection, sent an email to the director. The reply documented the refusal, because the policy states that you have to have a city official sponsor it. The clerk originally did not give this information to encourage the applicant to seek a, a city official. Advice was given to the churches to worship on the grassy areas. They were also cautioned about the noise ordinance. April Faith Month, chalk on the walk. When I inquired about the policies having children expressing their faith by drawing on the city sidewalks, the clerk of streets and sidewalks said, no problem, until I said, some children may write, Jesus loves you. She retracted her statement because of separation of church and state. I pursued further speaking to the director, and he was very careful in saying that it was permitted, but chalk must be environmentally safe. He advised not using Centennial Park sidewalks, because others may add graffiti and complain. The yearly human relations award, social justice. For two years, there were, there have been applicants submitted for religious ministries who have done outstanding work for the community. For example, Compassionate Heart Ministries for special needs adults, or New Beginnings Church at Woodbridge Weekly Suites, ministering to travelers and also families who have been evicted. They have been, they have not been selected. Intersection Church Pastor was selected one year, not for religious support, but for human, humanitarian help for immigrants. I assume it's because of separation of church and state. May I add, the DEI flag is flown during the award ceremony, and LGBT causes are selected every year since the anti-discrimination ordinance. These are a few samples of the dismissal of our constitutional right of religion in Holland. This must not be ignored anymore. The newly-elected council needs to look at reforms for protecting our citizens' religious rights and freedom of speech. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And, and we did allow applause when, when people were thanking the council members for their service, but it is the rule of this council that we do not allow any type of response to public comments, so we would appreciate it if you would abide by that. Could you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Yes, Martha Capastani, Holland.
Good evening, council, and I want to thank you for your service. As I was looking back through the summer events for Holland, I came across the flyer for Pride Month. As I began to take a closer look, I found the event at Park Theater on the evening of June twenty-third. Much to my dismay, the event had no age restriction listed. It was promoted as an immersive enchantment, a night of mystery and mischief with burlesque, drag, divination, music, and more. So I don't understand, what does immersive enchantment mean? Immersive how? What was happening inside Park Theater? I don't know if there were any children or teens present, but it's very likely there was the usual, stripping, pole dancing, and who knows what else. What troubles me is that this year, we went from drag restrict, with age restrictions outside the city, to drag with questionable age restrictions right across the street from Centennial Public Park. Do these events really have anything to do with LGBTQ plus acceptance? Do these events really improve acceptance? During the summer activities of two thousand and twenty-two, there was no Drag Queen Story Hour, but this last summer, it was a promoted event in the city, but due to public outcry, it was canceled. Now, I know I'm repeating myself once again when I say that drag, and burlesque for that matter, have nothing to do with LGBTQ acceptance. If you look up Drag Pedagogy, it's a teaching method, and the people behind this have their own manifesto that says exactly what they want to do. They believe that the concept of socially monogamous marriage and the nuclear family is a Western construct and should be deconstructed. However, they fail to admit that their own ideas are a Western social construct, given and written by the likes of John Money and Alfred Kinsey, just to name a few, major predators of their time and still leaving a trail of destruction in their wake. The leaders of these drag organizations are themselves ideologues, it's a religion for them, and they have built up forty local chapters already in the United States and are still expanding. They even go as far as to say that getting to children while they're young is important. They use bright colors, balloons, and glitter, et cetera, at these various events like a party, which they know draws children in. The performance seems like that of a storybook time that kids often enjoy and love, but the stories are confusing and inappropriate for children, a child's understanding, and over time, they often devolve into physical interactions, dancing, giving money to the drag queens, not to mention the display of degrading stereotypes for women. You can look up the books they read for yourself, and they want to begin planting the seeds of queerness and sexuality early in children, which we know are impressionable, easy to manipulate, and take advantage of. If you tell a child, or an adult for that matter, something over and over again, they will begin to believe it and embrace it. We know this is dangerous, because the person they are listening to could be an authority figure like a teacher, or a stage character like a drag queen, or an influencer online. They may even be given inappropriate books with graphic pictures to read, of which are already in our schools, and some are actually available in our own Holland library. Adults can make their own choices about their sex lives and who they want to be with, but protecting children is one of our main purposes on this earth. Unfortunately, there are many misguided and dangerous people that think kids should be exposed to adult themes younger and younger, which only makes them potentially more vulnerable to all types of predators and bad decision-making regarding their lives. I don't know how we got from the ordinance about equal protection to drag and burlesque in downtown Holland Park Theater. People are concerned about what's coming next, because something else always comes next. Adult clubs? Drag floats in the Tulat Time Parade? I don't want to sound harsh, but the truth is, these types of events tend to morph out of control. I won't say where, but places close to us have seen adults joining the drag queens onstage and stripping with them in very public forums with kids around. If you're an adult and that's your thing, have at it, but let's keep it out of the city and in closed forums with appropriate age restrictions. Again, drag is never family-friendly, and it's a very divisive issue for Holland. I know that there are good things happening for our city too, but I feel like they're just being overshadowed by these types of events that seem to quickly expand in the wrong direction for children and families from all walks of life. I again recommend that you check out the Gays Against Groomers website. Don't believe what Wikipedia says, they just want you to dismiss them at hand. I respect Gays Against Groomers and their stance on protecting children and teens from inappropriate sexual content. After all, they speak from within the community. Sometimes kids need protection from themselves and other kids who buy in too early to what they don't understand. They need protection from misguided adults with good intentions, and those who really don't care about them but are pushing their own agendas. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Yeah, my name is Araceli Garcia, and I live in Holland, Michigan, on the north side. And I know that this meeting is, is very important to, especially to people that are getting ready to, you know, a new election, right? And so November the seventh, and of course, we were thankful for the City Council and the mayor, the leadership at, at this present time. And like I said, I've been here before telling you that we are lifting you in prayer, you know, because it is, it is a task. It, it is a lot of meetings that you attend and, and making decisions for the good of Holland, Michigan. And so we continue to do that, you know, to pray for you. We belong to City Hill Church, and we're, we're thankful that new leadership is going to arise too, you know. Some of you are retiring, and so, but we do want to, what we want to see in this new, you know, new, new council, new mayor possibly, is that they be transparent and, you know, include the community and be out, out in the community, you know, more, and, and find the needs and, and know the needs of the people. And so, you know, I'm happy to be in Holland, Michigan, you know, it's been a peaceful place, but there are changes coming, you know, new rules and, and new ordinances and new, you know, that can cause, you know, havoc in Holland, Michigan. But we want the peace, and we pray for the peace, you know, here in Holland, Michigan. And so we're supporting in prayer, and, and also, you know, our finances, the finances that are moved in, in, in Holland, is important to be transparent. Who are you guys supporting, you know? Who are you not supporting? And, and it should be, you know, supporting any event, especially for the family, amen, for, for the freedom of our, of our expression, our faith. And so we're thankful that, you know, April And so we're thankful that, you know, April Faith Month, we got a chance to celebrate it and thankful for, for the ordinance, even though it was said at the end of April, but that's okay, it was said, you know, that it was declared, you know? And we're, we're thankful and we're not going to forget that. So God bless you guys and, and hope, you know, for the best for the elections that are coming, and we will continue to pray for you. God bless you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Good evening, city council folks. My name is Orlando Estrada, and I've always lived in Ward Two. And like my family says, we've always lived here. The board moved on us, it's true. Anyway, so just wanted to just make some suggestions. I'm not here to judge anybody or scold anybody. I know that I was trying to get something printed in the Holland Sentinel because I'm a writing candidate for Ward Two. And I find it interesting that, you know, the Holland Sentinel is obsessed with like Ottawa Impact, dissolving DEI, which is why they can do that, but they won't print a Mexican-American's press release. I find that fascinating, but that's not your guys' fault. And that's not why I'm really here today. Here to talk about transparency. So I'm going to identify as transparent, and my pronouns will be who and where. And I'm talking about what kind of transparency I'm talking about. They were asking me, do I endorse Ottawa Impact? I don't endorse group, I endorse individuals. But if I had to endorse a group, it'll be Latin American for Progress because they've done outstanding stuff for the community when it comes to educating people about learning the language, English language, computer software stuff of that nature. When I talked to people at the door in the last couple of weeks here, they're telling about like, you know, Orlando, a lot of people don't want to talk about it, it's not really popular, but do you think it'd be a good idea if maybe the council wanted to do like a human trafficking commission? Because you know, during Tulip Time, that stuff actually does happen, and it's not good. But it's not your guys' fault, there is no simple solution to everything. But it is just merely a suggestion because at the end of the day, there are bad things that we cannot control, but there are ways to actually limit those things if we make these honest efforts. I personally am a friend of Commissioner Lucy Ebel. I am not ashamed of any of my friends, regardless if they're popular or not popular. So it does not matter to me if there are people who want to see her unseated. I know that everybody here that's sitting in council did work hard to be in that seat. You had to raise money, you had to spend time and energy, and you got people that'll call you names, people say you're going to be your friend, they step behind your back. So I respect the fact that you guys are in there, regardless if I agree with your ideology or not, because I know you all guys care about the city of Holland. But at the end of the day, there are people out there that are being malicious, that try to make, you know, these cute little smart remarks, and I don't appreciate that. And that's why I'm really happy that at least the election in Ward Two has been very positive and has been very spirited, in my opinion. So with that being said, another couple of my neighbors talked to me about like, you know, Holland's a really great progressive-type city, and that we should be ahead of the curve. And I know there's like a lot of things that are happening in Lansing right now, which we have no control over, and I know Lansing's partisan, we're nonpartisan, thank God it's nonpartisan. But you know what? I think they're finding like new ways to how they're going to word things when it comes to like, I guess, like guns, abortion, some of that nature. I mean, why can't Holland be a sanctuary city for like the unborn? That'd be pretty cool, just like stick out because like a different type of city out there. But at the end of the day is, I know that one of my main passions I really want to speak about is the waterfront project. That's going to affect traffic, parking, I know people were talking about that. I have not been to all the meetings because I work a full-time job myself. And there has been talks, I think, a gentleman earlier was talking about that, is it possible to have maybe a performing arts convention center? I know there's a lot of work that goes into it, time spent, all that stuff. So I do have friends in the performing arts community that will appreciate something to be considered. And of course, to be considering that, a proposal has to be put up front. But I don't know all the working parts in that, so I'm just bringing it up that it's not just one person saying it, there's actually a lot of people saying it, but some people, they're introverts. I'm, I'm also an extrovert, so I have no problem speaking up for people, just like you speak up for people here in the state of Holland that may be afraid to speak up. And that's why I have respect for you guys in the seat, because at the end of the day, you work hard to get where you are, and I'm just speaking on a different part of the community. So with that being said, my name is Orlando Estrada. I'm running camp, and I approve this message, and learn more at voteforlando.com. And God bless you guys and nobody else, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? And would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Sure. My name's Larry Shattuck. I live in the state of Holland, and I'm running for office too. I'm running for the mayor here in the state of Holland. I got to tell you is, I've been running for this race over the last seven months. It is amazing how much you folks go through. I've learned some things. It's a long, hard road. I've come to appreciate the fact that it's really difficult at times to try to figure out how you're going to please everybody because that isn't probably how it's going to happen, it just ain't, you know? But in the last seven months, I have asked probably over a thousand people who support me why they wanted me to run. And what I found is, I spoke with people from every persuasion, people who have a lot of money, people who don't have hardly any, people who are of color, and people who are just white like me. And every time I've, I've talked to these folks, I get different answers, you know? Invariably, people want to know, how did I vote? You know, what did I vote for during the election? Or they want to know what I think about gender issues. But I wanted to talk to you today about something that's already been mentioned, is transparency, because it seems to be coming up a lot. And for whatever reason, a lot of the people I talk to don't feel that everyone is, that a lot of the issues are seeing the full light of day, and I don't know why. I've been through a number of different things in professional life, and usually you get down to a point where you start asking questions and people wonder what you're thinking and why you're thinking. And there's an old saying that, you know, perception's reality. It just is. It may not be right, but it is. And right now, there's a lot of people who perceive that things just aren't, aren't fully covered. And one of those things was the Uniform Development Ordinance. It's been a hot button for a long time. Some things that have happened under, under the current leadership here. The Planning Commission leadership and makeup was changed, of course, when, when Mr. Mayor came into, into office there. The original intent of the office, of the ordinance was changed. It was from, as I remember from the commercial, it included, then began to include residential properties. And it was, it was conducted, a lot of this happened in the middle of the winter, and it happened during COVID. The thing that people really had a problem with there is they didn't feel like there was, there was full visibility to that. It wasn't like that you weren't having conferences and things, there was Zoom sessions that went on and so on. But that was something that just didn't feel like everybody got the full scope of things. It finally did pass, but it passed with a lot of grief and consternation. It just didn't go the way it was originally planned. And the people, when they found out what was actually in, I'll call it Udo One, man, people didn't like it at all. And so I'd, I'd just like to say that wasn't really transparent very much, didn't look to be. Candidate qualification discrepancies. There's a guy running right now that just got up here, Orlando Estrada, and he's running as a write-in. He's running because there was some discrepancies in the election process this time. I don't know how, I don't know how many of you folks probably knew it, but right now, there's, this gentleman's running because another person who wanted to run didn't have the opportunity because the rules that were published at one time were incorrect. I understand clerical issues. I understand things can run like that. Everybody has those issues at a time. But you know, this particular issue that happened is going to affect, you know, Ward Two in specific. I mean, just, it's, it's, it's really a big deal. And I, I think, Ms. Raymond, you've done a great job so far. You're running in that word. There's some issues there that people realize that are, you've agreed with, and some people don't agree with them, and now they don't have any way to, to against that. And it's without the, the write-in candidate, they're going to have somebody who went and voted for them before. That's kind of a thing where there wasn't a lot of transparency, and I could see if you said, you know, we made a mistake. If you made it transparent and you basically apologize, no big deal. But that wasn't brought up, and people didn't realize that. The last thing is the waterfront project, and it's already been talked about here. You know, I've got a sheet here, I was looking at this. I actually had a chance to talk to the two bidders that didn't show up. This sheet here shows projects, the one that was accepted and the one that got shelved. And I know it wasn't because people didn't have any money to finish it. I know there was a lot of resources behind it. It included a lot of things that the whole entire community would have really appreciated seeing. And I don't understand why it never meant, made it to council. I have no idea, but I've been told it didn't. It included that-
Mr. Mayor, that's five minutes.
I'm sorry, your time has expired.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address council at this time? Seeing none, I will close the public comment period. Next item on our agenda is written petitions and communications. In addition to allowing for in-person public comment at our meetings, we do also have an email address that you can email, and that will reach all members of council, and that is publiccomment@cityofholland.com. That's publiccomment@cityofholland.com. We do collect those in between our regular meetings, and then if we do receive them, we accept them into the record as during that regular meeting. We don't read them out loud, but we do accept them into the record. We do have one this evening. What is the pleasure of council in regard to our attached public comment email?
Move that we accept the attached public comment email into the record.
Move by Aaron Sors, is there support?
Support.
Support by Seoul, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item, item 12C1, Dwelling Place Approval of Resission Agreement. Mr. Van Beek?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council and members of the public. In a moment, I know we have two representatives from Dwelling Place here that would be happy to answer any question, give any context and further information that you might desire. I'm going to go back in time a little bit here and talk about both of the next two items because they're, obviously, if you look at, at the agenda, they're related. So I won't, I won't go through this twice, I'll just go through it once. You will recall that, I think it goes back about six years now, and I remember that because it was very early when I joined the city as city manager. We had an ongoing conversation with two churches, Hope Church and the United Methodist Church on 10th Street, where they were very interested in pursuing a housing project to address affordable housing needs in the community. And they started a conversation and really took a look at utilizing some of their land to then pursue a project. And that marched through the process, including them going through the planning commission process. And then part of that was coming before council because they wanted to pursue something called a LITEC or a low-income housing tax credit from the state of Michigan. In order to approve for, and get approved for a LITEC agreement, it requires action by the city that the city would indicate that you're in support and also are using a tool to also help from an incentive perspective, that type of project. Historically, here in the city, what we've done is we've approved what's called a pilot agreement, which pilot stands for payment in lieu of taxes. And additionally, here in the city, we've had what we call a Metropolitan Services Agreement. And together, we take action on, you take action on those, and you did that in the case of the Hope on 10th Project. I think it was like in August of 2022, something like that. Thank you for nodding your heads on that, helping me. And council, you approved, considered, and then ultimately approved a resolution. And that resolution adopts both the pilot agreement and an accompanying Metropolitan Services Agreement. That was approved, was packaged, was sent on to the state of Michigan to be considered for the LITEC. Tried a couple times, and unfortunately, and particularly the second time, I think we were particularly maybe disappointed because we thought that there were some, we scored very well, but unfortunately, it did not, in that competitive process, get funding. So what Dwelling Place did is they kind of came back, they were looking at another project, actually called a scattered site project. And they really moved forward and separate from Hope on 10th Street, the project named for that project. They looked at a project on Collin Park Drive, and you'll recall, council, that we went through an extensive process also with that that really started with many years back, taking a look at excess city properties that we had and taking a look at possibilities of how we could utilize that. Community Action House has a historic property kind of in from Collin Park Drive a little bit. And they approached and worked with Dwelling Place to combine the Community Action House property with excess property along Collin Park Drive that the city had, and quite frankly, still has. But we, we went through a request for proposals process, which we often do. It's a very open process for everyone to apply for. And in that, Community Action House and through Dwelling Place applied and had a project that also went through the planning commission process and was approved for housing in those combined sites. And there's an option agreement that has not been exercised, but does stand in place, and you all approved it for that Collin Park site for housing. That was also partnered back then with a potential project elsewhere in the city. That also did not get LITEC funding when they, when they applied for it. Well, actually not, they never ever got to that point because the Hope project didn't come through. So what's before you tonight is that the Dwelling Place has asked and is approaching us that they're combining the prior agreement, Hope on 10th Street, with the project that also has been approved for Collin Park Drive, and are going to go for LITEC funding on that combined project. There's information in the packet that talks about how scattered site development works. So it's really trying to increase the scoring, basically for this competitive funding from the state. So they're tenacious in this and going after and taking a look at different opportunities. So what's before you tonight is first, the approval of a resission agreement, basically taking back and the resolution pilot and MSA for this 10th Street project standing alone. And you do have to take, take consideration and act on that. The recommendation, obviously, is to go ahead and rescind that agreement. And then after you would take action on that, not presuming how you'll act, then you have a new resolution with a new pilot agreement and a new MSA agreement that represents both the 10th Street project along with the Collin Park project. Okay? The pilot agreements historically, I'll say they're relatively standard now at, at this point in our process, where it's the applicant, when they start having, if it's approved, and it's all contingent again on state LITEC funding, there's 4% of the net shelter rents goes through a third party at the end of the year that's collected. And then 4% of that net shelter rents would come to the city, and that's shared with all of the taxing entities. So that's the pilot agreement within that resolution. And then the MSA agreement is something legally allowed, and more recently, something that the city has done, recognizing that there's a higher level of municipal services that the city is responsible for, providing, and that while we're participating in incentive here, we want to make sure that we're sensitive to the needs that we have in providing services to entities and residents such as this. And that would be, historically, it was kind of a flat dollar amount that we tried to kind of figure out per project. We're actually moving more in a direction where that, that can be difficult as we have more of these to try to figure out what's an appropriate flat dollar amount. And then depending on the, on the, you have to have like increases over the years. So what we're really pivoting to and taking a look at is that we'd also do this MSA for a 2% of the net shelter rents, which we're going through that process anyway for the pilot agreement. And then that 2% of the net shelter rents comes to the city but is not distributed amongst the other taxing entities. It's just to help offset the city services that we would provide in that instance and make sure that we're taking care of the finances also of the city. and make sure that we're taking care of the finances also of the city. So sorry for a lot of information there, but hopefully that gives you context of how we got to this point in time, and also what the resolution and the pilot and the MSA stand for. If it's okay, I think giving Stephen and Merrily an opportunity, whatever I missed, but maybe also just to say a little bit about the project would be great.
And would you please state your names and municipalities for the record?
Thank you. Stephen Wooden, municipality of residence, Grand Rapids, Michigan. Housing and Community Development Manager for Dwelling Place of Grand Rapids. Thank you, Mayor Box and council, for having us today, and thank you, Mr. Van Beek, for the introduction. You cut about 90% of what I was going to share. So, and did so much more eloquently than I could do. So, you know, as many of you know, we worked together on our first Hope on 10th application, that included the First United Methodist site and the Hope Church site. We tried twice, we improved our application the second time around, but still didn't cut it. And so in that time also, the what's called Qualified Allocation Plan, the policy that the state housing authority preestablishes to determine what applications are more favorable than others, also changed. And so in that context, when we learned that First Hope did not get funded, it gave us a moment to reevaluate the many sites that we currently are working in and try to evaluate what is the strongest application we can put together so that we can start to deliver more affordable housing options here in the city of Holland. And it became clear the strongest option from a scoring perspective and from an operational perspective was combining the scattered site development at near Collin Park Drive, including the city-owned property and Community Action House's currently-owned property with Hope Church. We have communicated with First United Methodist that we are not saying we're done with you. We're just saying this is what we're applying for funding for in this round, because that's the most competitive application we can put together, and we want to be able to stop talking about building housing, and we want to start building housing. And as a result, that's why these two pilot action items are before your agenda today. I'd like to bring up Marielle Mesa, Housing and Community Development Associate for Dwelling Place, who's been in charge of much of the Collin Park work, so that she can explain a little bit the new project that's before you, given that Hope Church remains in terms of its original proposal unchanged. So, Marielle.
And also, would you please state your name and municipality for the record?
Good evening. Marielle Mesa in Grand Rapids, Michigan. First of all, thank you so much for the opportunity to speak to all of you tonight. As Stephen mentioned, we decided to pursue a project that's combined by the two Collin Park properties and Hope Church's property. So I'll talk a little bit about how the development is composed. So we're proposing 61 units. Originally, First Hope was 46 units, correct? So that means more units of housing. On the city's property, we are proposing five three-bedroom townhomes. And on Community Action House's property, it would be 41 one- and two-bedroom apartments. So that's a multifamily, three-story building with elevator access. And our architect is Isaac V. Norris. As, I'm not sure if everyone here has seen the designs, but I believe you have, Mayor Box. It is beautiful. From what, from all the community engagement that we went through, what the, what the community mostly wanted to see was on the multifamily building, something that mirrored a lake house. So a lot of like blues and whites, and it was very welcome to the community. We didn't get much of of no's, but it was more of like, we want to make sure we have enough parking, want to make sure that it blends well with the community. And for the townhomes, they were also very welcomed by the community. And what the nearby neighbors wanted to see was more of like earthy tones, because that's what's nearby. And what we proposed was also very welcomed. And as Stephen mentioned, on the Hope site, we still remain the same 15 apartments in a two-story building.
Any questions that council has for staff or the applicant? Oh, we do. Lynn, yes, Ms. Raymond.
Hi, thank you so much for your persistence and your creativity. I noticed in the, in the report that, from the city manager, that, I don't remember reading about this before, that the project must be owned by a limited dividend housing association. Can you talk a little bit about that? And I think one of the attractiveness about these projects is that Dwelling Place is the manager, so could you just talk about that?
Yes. So it's for the purposes of using the loan of housing tax credit program. So the way it works is there's a tax credit that is applied to the amount of investment made in affordable housing. Now, we are a tax-exempt entity. The tax-exempt entity cannot claim a tax credit. And so in order to, and this is also done for even taxable entities that work in affordable housing, but may not have the capital to directly invest in the project themselves, they will use the tax credit form what's called a limited dividend housing association, limited partnership, in which the developer is given what's called the managing member stake. It is a small ownership percentage, but it's the controlling percentage. So they get to control what happens, they manage the property, they decide its operations. The other side is an investor member. It's typically a financial institution, sometimes it's a bank providing direct investment, or through a pool of investments organized by what's called a syndicator. That's what allows us to turn that tax credit into actual money to finance the housing. But ultimately, the interest that is owned by Dwelling Place as the managing member is the controlling interest and can fully manage and operate the housing under the LI-Tec affordability restrictions. And that allows us to apply our own mission for how we manage properties, ensuring that they are durable, safe, and quality. And, yeah, it is the function to allow us to use the tax credits to turn them into actual dollars to create the housing. And, but it is, it is a Dwelling Place property and through and through.
Mr. Freeman.
I'm questioning your anticipated timeline. I understood it before when this was all happening. Same type of timeline that you would anticipate?
Yeah.
Go through again and then?
So one of the other changes through the Qualified Allocation Plan is typically we have two rounds of where they accept applications, April and October. It's already past October, or now November, and so what they decided to do in the current QAP to catch up on time was they condensed what would have been the October of '23 round and the April of '24 round into one December one round. It still means we likely have about a three-month, three-to-four-month window between submitting an application and getting a result. So that puts us into March or early April where we'll find out. I've been at least personally thinking St. Patrick's Day is going to be a great time to find out whether we get funded or not, maybe because that's, because I'm a Spartan. But the, if we find out that we get an award, it's typically a six-to-even-ten-month process of closing with an investor and beginning construction, depending on different environmental review processes, different regulatory hurdles, substantive due diligence with the investor partner, finalizing the detailed construction plans, the bid-ready plans, and preparing that package to close with the investor, close on the property, and start construction. And so assuming we're maybe, let's go in the middle, an eight-month process, that means we're likely starting in the final quarter of 2024. It's about a 12-month construction window, so we'll be, hopefully, knock on wood, opening our doors and leasing up towards the end of 2025.
Thank you for that timeline, it helps. And then, just, I feel like I'm missing something, and if I did, I apologize. There's the piece that we added, the Collin Park piece with the current with Hope Church. The piece I'm missing is why not with then First Church?
That's a great-
If it was stronger yet with more.
Yeah, it's a great question. So we're limited by the amount of credits we can put into an application. So there's a cap on how many credits you can apply for, which in turn limits the size of the project. Because if you start putting forward a project that's larger than the amount of credits you can receive, it means you're now adding on costs that you don't have a way of paying for, right? And so if we're only allowed to apply for X amount of dollars, that limits how much we can produce with those dollars, too. And so that 60-unit count is typically the maximum before you start pressing up against that limit. And then from there, we looked at, do we combine First and Hope with, do we combine them all together and see what that does? That ultimately was not a viable option. We looked at combining Hope with Collin Park, we looked at combining First with Collin Park. We also, as, if you were paying attention to some of our community engagement sessions, we had also looked at a potential option on 16th and River. That was also included in the mix of trying to figure out what combination of sites delivers the strongest application. And it ultimately, largely because of the acquisition costs, the Collin Park, Community Action House, and Hope Church combination was the strongest application, especially because our state housing authority and their desire to try to produce as many new affordable housing units as they can with the limited pot of funds they have, have emphasized credit efficiency. And so if you're able to put forward a project that has pretty low acquisition costs and deliver the kind of units that we're proposing, that increases its competitiveness. Thank you.
Mr. Corbin.
So thank you for the presentation. I'll probably be capitalizing on what Councilman Raymond had asked, and maybe you've already answered it, but I just want clarity. There's a number of partnerships here, and I know when we've done LI-Tec in the past, there's been kind of a management of that LI-Tec agreement to making, to ensure that certain rentals are at the levels that they're supposed to be at, right? So who is going to be responsible at the end of the day to ensure that that makes the cut?
Dwelling Place. So, you know, ultimately, Dwelling Place is the managing member of that limited dividend housing association. We're the ones who are accountable for delivering on any agreements. We're the ones held accountable for compliance, we're the ones held accountable for overall property management, because we also go above being the developer and managing member, we also serve as property manager. Not all developers do so, we do so, it lines up with our mission. So ultimately, the buck completely stops with us. And if there's any additional security that that investor member provides, is they also have a reason to hold us accountable to what we commit to.
Ms. Raymond.
I was just wondering, what, did you, did you say that there was something that changed in the QAP that made this project a little bit more feasible? Did I misunderstand that?
Yeah, it was a combination of the underlying continue to emphasize credit efficiency, that was something in the previous QAP. And also, on top of that, some of the site amenities that were crucial also were part of the mix. And, but ultimately, it really fell down to the credit efficiency points. You know, historically, that has been part of the mix, but it has not been a dominant part of the mix. It has become a far more dominant factor. And so when we were unsuccessful in the last round, and seeing that the new QAP still preserves credit efficiency, we realized we had to develop a far more efficient project. And the properties with the lowest acquisition prices were the most efficient.
Ms. Soul.
So it's like a one-stop shopping, you guys are the developer, the manager, and what was the other one?
So we are technically the managing member, which is the legal term for the developer.
Okay.
And we are also the property manager, yes.
And then for those of us that don't know, with the QAP, what does that represent?
Qualified Allocation Plan. So it's the state policy, so the tax credits that we've been talking about, that is, it's technically a federal tax incentive, but the states are delegated to administer them. There's a limited pot that's available every year, and each state gets to decide what criteria are they going to use to evaluate the applications they receive. You know, in the past, it's been first come, first served, and that meant you had campers outside their offices before the application deadline. They've since changed that in an abundance of wisdom to prioritize values of the state housing authority in the state of Michigan. That's why they emphasize areas that have a number of amenities within walking or transit distance. It's why they emphasize projects that are nearby transit stops. It's why they emphasize projects that are in areas of high investment, like the city of Holland. And also why, given the statewide housing crisis, they've emphasized efficiency with these credits so that you can deliver as many new apartments and dwellings as you can.
So the top credits for this project that won were because it's in the city and close to amenities that maybe are barriers for people that are on fixed incomes or low income?
Exactly.
Okay. And then, so you're saying one and two bedrooms, what price range would those be affordable? And then the three-bedroom townhomes?
Yeah.
Do we have a range of that yet?
We do, I'll admit, they don't have them off the top of my head. They are set by the state housing authority, and they're based on the area median income. And so we are proposing a range of incomes being served and rents that are set to be affordable for those income ranges, and that affordability metric is based on 30% of their income. So if 80% of the area median income is a certain amount, that rent for that 80% AMI apartment is 30% of that. And so in terms of the range, we are proposing a mix from 40, 60, 80. We also, to continue our commitment with Hope Church on serving folks with disabilities, are seeking a, an additional form of housing assistance called A11 vouchers that specifically service those adults with disabilities. And even examining other options if we're unsuccessful in that, so we can deliver on our commitment to serving households with disabilities as part of this project.
Well, that's great, because I'd like to definitely see those people that generally marginalize and are overlooked to have some first dibs added, of course.
Absolutely.
So, thank you for your work.
Any other questions for staff or the applicant? Great. What is the pleasure of council in regard, we're talking about just right now, 12C1, the approval of the rescission agreement?
Move to rescind the agreement, 12C1.
Moved by Soul, is there support?
Support.
Support by Hookstra, any discussion? Seeing none. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Peters?
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Soul?
Yes.
Erin Sors?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Mr. Van Beek, I know we talked about both parts of this already, but I do want to give you the opportunity, if there's anything you want to add on 12C2, the new-
If you want me to explain again, I will.
All right. I don't have a need for that. Council have any additional questions for staff or the applicant in regard to the second half of this proposal? All right. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the Dwelling Place Collin Park Apartments resolution to approve a development agreement and municipal services agreement?
Move to approve, we accept the Collin Park Apartments adoption resolution.
Moved by Soul, is there support?
Support.
Support by Erin Sors, any discussion? I just have one comment again. Thank you for your diligence on this. One of the biggest things, biggest priorities of this council has always been affordable housing. I think that this is a great example of just how difficult it is to be able to get this actually built. We've approved 1,000 units over the last four years, and only 268 of those have actually been built. And we appreciate your going back to the well again to try to get this pushed through, so thank you very much for that. Kathy, would you please call the roll?
Corbin?
Yes.
Soul?
Yes.
Erin Sors?
Yes.
Hookstra?
Yes.
Raymond?
Yes.
Freeman?
Yes.
Peters?
Yes.
Mayor Box?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda, item 12E6.1, gifts. Kathy, would you please review the gifts for us?
The city manager's office is pleased to report the following gift. Public Safety Services Department, a donation of $300 was received from Catherine Hobbs in support of various programs. It is recommended that these donations be accepted with appreciation, credited to the appropriate account, and an expression of gratitude be forwarded to said donors.
Thank you, Kathy. What is the pleasure of council in regard to the gifts?
Move to approve, accept appreciated donations with the token of our appreciation.
Moved by Soul, is there support?
Support.
Support by Erin Sors, any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item, item number 13, communications from the city manager. Mr. Van Beek.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council and public. Couple of things tonight. First, as it's already been referenced, this is the last meeting of the current council as currently formed, which means a couple of things. One, it means is that we will not have a study session next week, because we won't have a sworn-in new council, so it's kind of weird to have a study session with a portion, so no study session next week. The following week, Monday, November 13 at 5:00, kind of follows history, is where we will have the swearing-in ceremony for people that are elected next week, Tuesday. And then November 15, 6:00, we get right back into it, and we have the regular meeting of council at 6:00. So just, that's been communicated a lot of different places, but just said one last time here also. Second, in introduction, I'm very excited about this, council certainly knows, and I'll talk about what made this opening here, but we're a little over three weeks in, and very excited to, for the first time at one of these meetings, introduce Mark Myers. introduce Mark Myers. And Mark, why don't you come on up? I'm not going to say a lot about him, because I think he's, he's going to, has a 45-minute speech about him and his background, but just to say, we're very lucky at the city to get someone of Mark's experience and dedication and integrity and background joining us here at the city. He'll talk about where he was before and his Holland roots, really, but he is serving as our new community and neighborhood services director, following a retirement, which I'll talk about here in a moment. And what I'm particularly excited about is you authorized in the budget last year, and kind of a new responsibility that we're throwing in the mix with Mark is economic development. And we have just a few things going on right now that he's already neck-deep into after three weeks. But really, this is a time just to make sure that you get to meet Mark, and we're really excited to have him here. And Mark, why don't you say hi? Welcome, Mark. Would you please record?
I will. Mark Myers, Norton Shores, formerly of Holland, Park Township and City of Holland, but I'll touch on that later. But thank you, Mayor Box and council members. Thank you, public. It's my pleasure to be here. I'm very excited to get started on the next chapter in my municipal service. And I have a background in city management, working for the city of Grand Haven, Norton Shores, and also Glencoe, Illinois. On a professional level, I've known Keith for a number of years. I have a great deal of respect for him. As I had mentioned earlier to some of the council members, he's put together a very effective team that's very clear to me during these first three weeks. And I'm looking forward to helping you move these transformative projects forward and improve the quality of life for the residents of Holland. So on a personal level, I spent my high school years, I'm a Holland Christian grad. I spent my high school and college years as both a Park Township resident, right across the lake, Lake Maclatawa, and also in the city as well. And so I've got great memories here. My family lives on the north side, if you will, and just have great memories, and it's a bit of a homecoming for me personally, and I'm very looking forward to it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, welcome. Good to have you.
Thanks. Thanks, Keith.
Anything else, Mr. Van Beek?
Yes. So you're like, well, what was that opening? Well, the opening is because long-term and very dedicated and great employee Mark Vanderpluug, you all know, but just as a reminder, is retiring, and he's in the home stretch here. We have a little bit of overlap and certainly some work getting up-to-date on economic development stuff. He's going to have a presentation with a council study session here in the next couple of months, talking further about housing development policy. So there's lots of things going on. But, you know, Mark Vanderpluug is one of, we get to the end of the year, right about now, and particularly after COVID, it seemed like a lot of people kind of delayed retirements. And now you get to the end of the year, and we've had a couple of years now, and this is another one of those, where we have quite a few retirements at different points and positions here in the city. And Mark Vanderpluug is one of those, and we're sorry to see him go. But I will say, in kind of a transition here, you know, I've always talked to employees that I've worked with and for, and that have maybe worked for me. I don't get really into hierarchy and stuff like that, but sometimes it's hard to go, and sometimes, like, you reflect back, and you're like, man, is it the right time? And I really hate to go, and all those types of things. And someone shared with me once, and I try to share it with others, is, you know, you come to the end of a career, you come to the end of a ride, and you really celebrate what you were a part of. And we're happy to see people that say, hey, it's time. And in retirement sense particularly, it's like, you know, there's, there's something else out there and not working as many hours. So we celebrate with people when they get to the point of retirement. And that seems fitting today, too, where we have three of you that we're celebrating tonight, and you guys all have contributed in some pretty major and great ways for making this community something that I think we all hope and strive for is better than most. So my appreciation from certainly staff and from myself, and I know that it's out there, but we also have a farewell open house for the three of you. Dave, Jay, and Nikki, thank you, and hopefully we get to celebrate you a little bit more on Saturday, December 2, from 8 until 10 in the morning at this Holland Civic Center place. But thank you.
All right. Just want to make sure that there wasn't anything else in there for you. Great, thank you, Keith. Next item on the agenda, appointments and communications from the mayor. I have two proclamations this evening. The first one is in regard to Veterans Day. Whereas, for more than 100 years, it has been our custom to commemorate November 11, the anniversary of the ending of World War I. And whereas, on this date, we celebrate Veterans Day to pay tribute to the heroes of that tragic struggle by rededicating ourselves to the cause of peace. And whereas, in the intervening years, the United States has been involved in other military conflicts, which added millions of veterans, living and dead, many from our city, to the honor roles of this nation. And whereas, we are forever indebted to the men and women of the United States Army, Navy, Air Force, Marines, and Coast Guard for their service and sacrifice in defense of the freedom of our great nation. And whereas, we acknowledge the work of our local veteran chapters and organizations that faithfully serve and represent our Holland area veterans. And whereas, as a city, we're thankful to the brave men and women of Holland. And whereas, we thank the city of Holland staff members for their faithful service to our nation and council members as well. And we did our very best to make sure we got every veteran from the, from the city of Holland on this list, and if we've forgotten you, I apologize, and please let me know so that we can get your name added to the list. But we want to thank Matthew Brower, John Weatherwax, Nathan Wyler, and Jose Padron Hernandez from the Holland Police Department, John Vandercoy, John Lundstrom, Matt Jones, Jacob Johnson from our fire department, Alexis Ayano from our Community and Neighborhood Services Department, Joseph Peterson from our Transportation Department, Sonny Kuhn from our Parks Recreation Cemetery Department, and Quincy Byrd, Belinda Sol, and Scott Corbin, who currently serve on the Holland City Council. And whereas, we pray for hope, renewal, and the well-being of our veterans in Holland and throughout our great nation. Now therefore, I, Mayor Nathan Box, and the City of Holland City Council, do hereby proclaim November 11, 2023, Veterans Day, a day to thank veterans across our nation and in our community for the sacrifice of their service. We encourage our community to participate in events honoring our veterans through appropriate public ceremonies and private prayers. We call upon our community to remember those who have fallen to protect our freedoms that we enjoy today, and we pray for the safety of those currently serving. Let us come together to pray for peace in our world on Veterans Day. Given under my hand and the seal of the City of Holland, this first day of November 2023, Mayor Nathan Box. And thank you all, and especially those of you on council here today. I also have a proclamation in regard to National Family Literacy Month. Whereas, National Family Literacy Day, established on the 100, by the 103rd Congress in 1994, and now marking its 29th anniversary on November 1, 2023, highlights the importance of reading and learning for the entire family, and emphasizes the impact that parents have on their child's learning. And whereas, this day is celebrated across America each year, and focuses on special activities and events that showcase the importance of family literacy programs that empower families and build a nation of readers. And whereas, literacy programs across the United States will observe National Family Literacy Day by holding read-a-thons, book drives, workshops, and family activities at schools, libraries, and community centers to encourage literacy. And whereas, as many as one in six adults struggle with reading and writing, and by learning to read, individuals can gain self-respect and confidence, and strive toward goals that otherwise would not be achievable. And whereas, the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution is a nonprofit, nonpolitical, volunteer women's service organization dedicated to promoting patriotism, preserving American history, and securing America's future through better education for children and adults. And whereas, the education, the education being one of the cornerstones of the National Society of Daughters of the American Revolution, is committed to increasing literacy by promoting and supporting literacy programs. Now therefore, I, Nathan Box, Mayor of the City of Holland, Michigan, and members of the Holland City Council, do hereby proclaim November as National Family Literacy Month. To underscore the importance of literacy, celebrate the joy of reading, encourage residents to promote literacy by reading together as a family, and to extend deep appreciation to our local librarians, educators, and literacy service providers for their tireless efforts to strengthen the literacy of our children and our community. Given under my hand and the seal of the City of Holland, this first day of November 2023, Mayor Nathan Box. And I do have one other item that, Mr. Corbin, I would like your assistance with, if you would join me. You could see the excitement on her face when I asked her to come up here. As, as Mr. Van Beek mentioned, we have three members of city council who are retiring this, this year after years of dedicated service. Nikki, you are my council member in Ward 4. Yes, you live, and, and we have started a tradition, actually founded by council member Corbin, our mayor pro tem. He, he created and designed challenge coins. Each one of them is numbered and individually engraved for the council members. And I'm going to read the full thing for you, Nikki, but I'm going to shorten it for Jay and Dave, because nobody wants to hear me read the same thing three times over. Yes. As a token of our utmost appreciation, we present council member Nikki Arnshorst with a Holland City Council challenge coin. This challenge coin serves as a symbol of gratitude reflecting the significance of the service to the city of Holland. This coin features the iconic City Hall building, symbolizing the community's rich history and bright future. The distinctive architecture and rich heritage of City Hall makes it a fitting backdrop for this special token. Tulips in different colors represent the council's characteristics on the front of the coin. A red tulip symbolizes passion and adoration. A white tulip represents honor and virtue. A yellow tulip symbolizes hope. A pink tulip symbolizes community. And a purple tulip signifies grace and leadership. There is also a phrase on the back, "Engrat magt magt, my Dutch is terrible," which God zimet ons, which means unity makes might, God be with us. Also includes the date of the city of Holland was established. The bottom of the coin is a smooth surface to permit the engraving of the city council member's name, their highest post on the council, and the dates of their service. There's a sequence number from 1 to 100 on the edge of the coin. The number one coin has been reserved and assigned to the coin designer. The council will issue additional coins as members leave office in good standing, and the coins are logged into a register for historic reference. So Nikki, it is my honor with Mr. Corbin to not only give you this, this recognition, but also your challenge coin.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Here, I'll tell you what, I'll have this for you, then we can do a shit, we can do a handshake. There you go. Congratulations, and thank you for your dedication. Mr. Hookstra.
Oh, come. Dave, Dave, the lion of the city council, been here serving for 20 years, as has been said many times before. This is a job that involves a lot of dedication, a lot of time, a lot of effort, and a lot of patience. Dave, you have each and every one of those things. I've been, it's been my pleasure to know you, to go to church with you for, I think, more than those 20 years. I think I knew you before you were a council member. And you have always been an incredible example of thoughtfulness, patience, calm, reserved speaking, waiting until you'd thought, thought everything out, and then providing those words of wisdom. So we, we appreciate that, 20 years, and incredible service to the city of Holland and to the members of the sixth ward. So thank you, Dave. Appreciate that.
Yeah. Mr. Peters?
16 years, as was said earlier this evening, 16 years serving the people of the city of Holland in the second ward. Jay, I know I've known you longer than that. You and I worked years, years ago on West Coast leadership. You're also, what, distinguished leadership award winner for the city of Holland, 2000, 2001, somewhere, somewhere in that neighborhood? Been involved in leadership development, community building, just about everything you can possibly imagine, and as we talked about earlier tonight, going to continue some service to the city of Holland and the people of the area as well. So we appreciate your, your, again, what an incredible amount of service, 16 years to the people of the second ward. We appreciate it, Jay. Thank you. Thank you.
And, and as I knew he would have to, Mr. Corbin has reminded me, there is a display on the back wall of city council chambers that shows the challenge coins, and also explains the design and the history of the coins. That is all I have as mayor this evening. Next item on the agenda, appointments, motions, and communications from council members. Ms. Raymond.
Yeah, I, people have said such lovely things about the three of you, and I just want to add that four years ago, when I was sitting out there looking to the, to the dais, I thought to myself, I would be so proud to sit up here next to Dave. And it turns out that I am not only proud to, to have served with Dave, but Nikki and Jay have, have really served really exceptional public service, and have learned so much from the three of you. So thank you so much, and hopefully we can stay in touch.
Ms. Sol.
Yeah, I was going to say the same. It's been a pleasure to serve, which each, the three of you, and we'll miss you. We'll be here, you know, right on as clockwork, if you ever want to join us. But I wanted to say thank you to Jay. He, I think during COVID, or about that time, I ran into him at Community Action House, and I was like, I don't know, I said, Jay Peters, right? And he's like, he had his mask on, and I, and we talked about running, and sure enough, here I am. So thanks, Jay, for your inspiration, and thank you for what you've done and your family. Appreciate all three of you, and wish you well in the next chapter, so.
Anyone else? Mr. Corbin?
Yes, so I'm in awe of the caliber of the people I've served with, including the three of you. I, I really appreciate, and I, I really appreciate the opportunity to have served with each and every one of you. Mr. Hookstra, the eloquent words that you use, I can't compare to how you use those words and, and really articulate to everyone what you're thinking at the time, and so compassionate about your thoughts and what you say to people. Nikki, I've learned a lot from you when it comes to Holland energy, and, and reserving or being a good steward of our resources and our energy resources, and how we use energy across the spectrum. So thank you for that insight. Jay, we butted heads at times, just reality. And part of that is democracy, right? We disagree, and that's good. That is good. That is good for democracy. We disagree, and at the end of the day, we come to a conclusion, where we make a decision what's best for the city of Holland. And Jay, you've been there each and every time for those debates. We've had really good discussions, and I appreciate that. You've really made me hone my argument on a routine basis to make sure I researched and looked into every issue that's before me. So thank you to all of you for your service.
Mr. Freeman.
And we're rounding this out.
And we're rounding this out. In that, thank you to all three of you for serving, and my time and relationship with you and Jay and Nikki has been brief, but Dave in particular, you welcomed me into the city when we moved here 27 years ago. And we walk together with your children, and you walk with mine, and thank you. And thank, I've been watching you for over 20 years, sitting here and doing different, serving in different ways in our city. So thank you, serving so well our community. We do all the same and represent it well.
Ms. Aaron's horse.
You know what, I'm going to break a little bit, and I'm going to talk about a different subject first. I have two items. One is near and dear to my heart, and this is, there's an election next week, you may know, and I want everybody to go out there and vote. Half the people vote absentee, and almost 1,500 people haven't submitted their absentee ballot yet. So bring them in, mail them in, at least by November 7th, or come in person. You may vote, it polls open at 7:00 a.m., they close at 8:00 p.m. You may also register at City Hall up to that day to vote if you're not registered to vote. So please vote mayor, the wards at large, it's an important election. So is that message approved by our city clerk? Thank you so much. The other one is, thank you for all your kind words. It's been a privilege and a pleasure to serve on council. And I, you tell Dan Burzma I have a hanky here instead of a Kleenex, it's more, you know, it's reusable. But I want to say, City Hall is a wonderful place to work. And in reference to the remarks by two candidates tonight, and your kind remarks, Dr. Short, thank you so much, they are in this race because of things they saw and observed, and I want to say it's because City Hall works so well that you are in the race. If you saw something and you weren't quite sure, or you didn't, there is a process. Everything has a process. Everything is done a certain way. There are no done deals or smokey, smoky back rooms. There really is transparency, and I have always said, and a couple people have actually come in and come into your office, Keith, and ask questions. It's very accessible, City Hall. Walk in and say, I don't get this. I've heard from five different people, this is the situation. Is this true? They will tell you, they will talk to you. You may call them up, you may email them. You will get the answers, and as you heard from the explanations tonight, there is an explanation, and it can be lengthy if you're willing to sit there, but this is, everything works. Everything works, and it's a great place to be. Every department, transportation, finance, we have a planning, the people are nice as pie, they're smart, they're efficient, and they get back to you. It's, so I really can't say enough. So it's a wonderful city to live in, and you can look around, see what parks and recreation do all the time. But I'm glad that you're in the race because you had questions, and it wasn't because things were broken, it's because things worked, and you want to be part of that. And you will find exactly how things are, the process, and how relationships are, and how layers of, you know, whatever our questions are, how it works. So thank you, everyone, everyone here, and I don't want, you know, we started out together, Lynn and the mayor, so, and you're not new anymore. So, thank you.
Yeah. Anyone else? Ms. Sol.
I just want to say, Army Strong, whoa, the best branch for veterans out there now, and every branch that they served and their families, because we couldn't have done it without our families, and to the communities that welcomed us back and sent us off. So with that being said, today also, the heels of Hispanic Heritage Month, today is the day that we honor our loved ones who have passed. Today is Day of the Dead, Dia de los Muertos, in honoring their lives. My earrings are of the Day of the Dead. So anyways, thank you. And then also, it is National or Michigan Adoption Month. We're always looking for families to be fosters. You have extra room, you have that special gift of fostering children that need loving or temporary or permanent homes. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Hookstra.
I guess for a few days yet, I have seniority here. If you know me at all, I'm a, I'm a big fan of economy of words. So I like to say less, and hopefully someone else says it so I don't have to. But I'm going to cash in on that stuff that I've banked up for a long time and have a few things to say, if that's okay with you all. Although I don't think you have much to say about it, so. First of all, I have a number of thanks to give, and first of all, thank you to all of those who have expressed sentiments tonight. I deeply appreciate that, and for the awards, it's, it's very appreciated, and I'm grateful for that. I want to thank my current council members. We've been through the trenches together for the last few years. We've, we've cajoled and argued and fought and celebrated, and that's been good stuff. And I appreciate the efforts of everybody here, the dedication that you have and the love for this city. That's very, very evident to me. So thank you all for that. The staff, we often say thank you to the staff because of how great they are, and I have to say that too. I've gotten to know over 20 years, a lot of the staff, both past and present, have the fortune, a good fortune of developing some close relationships with some of them. And I'm here to tell you, if you don't know it already, there is no better staff anywhere than that this city has. And the reason in large part why it works so well is because of them. So I want to express my thanks to everybody, regardless of position or, or work that they do, for the dedication they have to the city, and making it so good. I tried to take into account of who I've served with, and it was a little successful and maybe not. I think I've served with five mayors, three managers, and either two or three interim managers. I can't, couldn't remember if Jody Seines actually filled that role or not. She did just about everything else in the city, but, and then I lost count on how many council members I've served with. One that stood out who's not here anymore is Mike Trathui, you know, our friend. He's responsible in large part for my being here, because he suggested I consider doing this. So you can blame him. My wife Sally's here tonight. She hasn't shown up here a lot, because she's a lot smarter than me. She knows how to stay out of the fray of what happens here, but I, you know, over 20 years, there have been a lot of nights that I've come home and unloaded, and she's listened to that and celebrated a lot of things too, but I couldn't have done this without your support and encouragement. So thank you for that. Appreciate it. As well as the rest of my family, my grandkids have learned, oh, where's Baba? Oh, he's at a meeting. Oh, okay. So there's been an expenditure of time away from my family, which I hope will make up for in the future, but they've been very supportive as well and encouraging to, to what this role has required, so I appreciate that. Nikki, I've sat next to you for a while here, and sometimes you're quiet, but I've appreciated the depth of wisdom that you have and the insight that you provide. So as a fellow outgoing person, thank you for sitting here and keeping me on a straight path. I want to say two special things to a fellow who's served nearly as long as I have, Brother Jay has, well, we've weathered a lot of stuff. There are a lot of issues that we faced, a lot of things that we've worked through. If you know Jay at all, you know that he is not an unpassionate person. I don't think I know of anybody in this town in particular who loves and is more passionate about the welfare of its people, the direction of the city, and in doing the right thing in the right ways. That, that passion has exhibited itself in some unique ways from time to time. In fact, some people might can have considered you to be a, on a.
Pig in the ass.
I was, I was debating whether I could say that, but thank you. Thank you for that. But again, any of those times, has any action or word or sentiment been expressed outside of that love and dedication for this community? So I just want to thank you for, for being who you are and allowing me the opportunity to learn from you and serve with you. It's been a big pleasure. As far as party shots go, I want to say something to my colleagues here that you already know, but it bears repeating. When I came on council 20 years ago, I inherited a culture that basically emphasized a mutual respect for each other on this commission, on this council. And it was that mutual respect that fostered, I think, the energy for us to create and operate in a very dynamic situation. It was that kind of concern for each other's opinions and, and ability to be involved that really fostered discussion on some very big hairy ideas that brought about a lot of the things that we enjoy now or are in the works. And so you know this, we have tools on this council to remind ourselves to make it happen, but I, I want to challenge you as a continuing group to remind yourselves of that heritage, and that that's important, that will distinguish, has and will continue to distinguish this council from a host of other government entities in terms of functionality and credibility. And I admonish you as well to those new folks who are coming on to indoctrinate them, make sure they are aware of it, hold yourselves accountable to it, don't forget it, frankly, don't screw it up. Because that's what's made this council for years that I've been here and prior to that, the great group that it has been, and has been able to give the city direction that it has. So do that. There's kind of one last thing I want to say, and I wasn't really planning on this, but I was brought to think of it tonight, listening to a lot of the comments. Over 20 years, I and my colleagues have listened to a lot of public comment, and so much of it has been informative and enlightening, at times humorous. But it has been an opportunity for us to engage with the public, let them speak to us, and let us hear what's on their minds. But I have to admit, there have also been times when it's been trying. It's been emotionally draining, quite frankly. And not because I bemoan the fact that there are differences of opinion, because there should be. We have that here. I acknowledge that everybody has an opinion and everyone is correct. That's a little joke. But that you should have the opportunity to come and share that with us, and we have provided that consistently over the years. What, what troubles me is that oftentimes it goes beyond just the sharing of an opinion. Because you can do that, and I want to say this with as much grace and respect as I can, you can do that and still acknowledge someone else's value in who they are and how they live, and get your point across. What I, what I am hearing more and more is an expression of opinion, and almost a dehumanizing of other people, and that's a dangerous thing. We live in a community, as we like to say, that everyone gets to live here. And what makes this community great is that it's a place where everyone can be, regardless of who you are, or what you value, or what your faith is or isn't, there's a place for you here because there's an acceptance of diversity, of opinion, and many, many other ways that diversity is expressed. So without belaboring this, I just want to, if you'll allow me, to caution the citizens against becoming overtly negative to the point where it hurts other people. I'm a person of faith in the God that I know says to love everybody, and their activities and demeanors that, as I estimate them, don't fit into that category, don't fit that description. And as a community that espouses a great faith tradition, we should be paying more attention to that. So be careful. Treat your people, treat your fellow citizens with respect, voice your opinion, of course, but understand that there are other people who are different than you, think differently than you, hold different opinions, live differently than you, but are of as equal a value as you are. So just be nice to each other, please, and make it easier on these folks going forward. So all that being said, Your Honor, I give up the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Hookstra. Any other comments from council members? Mr. Peters.
I remember when I joined council, I think it was 2007, I was surrounded by people sitting around the, whether it's in the study session or the dais here, where they'd all been there for 15 or 20 years. And I look at when Dave and, and I and Nikki walk out the door, that's 42 years of experience. And I don't know that the people that are left have that kind of experience. I'm not saying that's good or bad, except it makes me reflect on who was, who was in the room for these last 16 years? What were we talking about? What, what kind of wisdom comes from having almost everybody around the table having 10 or 12 or 15 years of experience? And I think about, at the time, our staff when I first joined in the last first maybe eight years of, of city council. We had a city manager who was here for more than 20 years, which is highly unlike, highly unusual for city managers to be in the same place that long. So Orin Wolf, we had an assistant city manager, a guy named Greg Robinson, who was in that seat for more than 20 years, worked for the city. Jody Seines, more than 20 years of experience, had every, every position you could possibly have at City Hall. Phil Meyer and, and Mark Vander, Mark Vanderplu, Mark Vanderplu, help me. 20-plus years, a very talented, skillful, caring, knowledgeable people who were running the city at the time. And you combine that with partnerships we had at the time, a guy like Bill Johnson, been involved with the city for well over 20 years, the architect, if you will, of the framework from which all of Holland has been developed. In a partnership with Gordon and Wyland, they were both at the University of Michigan Hospital, and Gordon brought him here, rather serendipitously. Guy named Greg Holcomb, Harvard grad, went to college with me, ended up having a huge influence on the framework of decision-making, that when we talk about Holland and our success and everything we have, these, these are the people who kind of wove the canvas upon which we now paint. And once I walk out the door and Dave, I don't, I don't want to make sure we don't forget from where we came. And those, those folks have, have made a huge impact on me. And I bring that here now, and I agree with Dave that we have some very, very talented people at City Hall. We've always had talented people at City Hall. We are so fortunate. We have a very strong budget. We have a very strong budget, and we talk about budgets and municipal capital improvement funds. We've always done a great job with that. And I'm so glad we have people here that will carry on, carry on those traditions, because that's what it's all about. Who do I thank? I thank every single person that lives in the Second Ward who was kind enough to say, "We want you to go, go spend every Wednesday night of your life and go to City Hall and represent us." And it's really been the honor of my life. And I grew up on, how many people do you know represent a city or a, a, a part of the city where, I literally grew up in the Second Ward. And I've lived in the Second Ward my whole life. I went to high school, I went to elementary school, I went to college, all in the Second Ward. It's, it's really kinda scary if you think about it. But let me say this, I'm the, my colleagues have been kind to me tonight. I have been a pain in the ass, I think, at times, because I don't think I handled change as well as I could. The decisions and how we make them have changed significantly. And I'm not saying that's bad. I'm saying I don't know that I was able to factor in how fast things come at us sometimes with the foundation from which I just happened to be here longer. And I think Dave and I had some conversations about that. It's like, man, it's just different right now. And I don't, I wanna come just short of apologizing to my colleagues, because we've had some, we've had some knock-'em-out, drag-'em-out fights, and I'd like to think I won most of them. But I don't think I did. And Mr. Corbin is probably the one that caught the, the biggest brunt of that, just because we are cut from such a different cloth. But yet, I'm glad you're sitting there. I wanna thank Mr. Shea for all the bourbon he's bought me since I saved his life. It's a very kind thing you've done. And I do have, as Dave said, I do have this, I don't know what it is about this town, but I've always loved it. And I'm also a guy who's, a glass is half-empty. I'm not a gla, I'm not a real optimistic person. I've never wanted to say, beat your chest, this is what we do, look how good we are, this is great, we're all world-class. I've never been like that. I'm more about what's wrong? What do we fix? How do we do better? What about those people that don't have those feelings about world-class and we get to live here? What about those people? I just tend to lead, for whatever reason, I tend to be more like that. So, thank you for this award tonight. I'm proud of the work we're doing with Heart Safe Community. I think in the next couple of months, you're gonna find out that this is a pretty big deal for the city of Holland, and will probably save lots more lives in the years ahead. And in closing, I would just like to say, I've known Lynn Raymond a long time. She was very supportive of me when I ran for mayor. I wish she would've worked just a little bit harder. But, but the truth is, if I had to pick, I know there's another, there's a candidate, I know that, that you're in a race, but I'm so grateful that you're in the Second Ward. I think you, the Second Ward's an interesting place. It's got a lot of interesting people. I've lived there for over thirty-something years now, and my wife and I, Kristen, have, have so many friends and so many great people in the city that I am indebted to. So, Lynn, I wish you the best, and thanks for your willingness to do it. Mr. Hookstra, if you wouldn't have run four years ago, I wouldn't have run four years ago. 'Cause I had to deal with all these other losers, and I couldn't, I couldn't do it without you.
And he strikes again.
So, there's a parting shot. My, my best wishes to all of you, and thank you for your kindness. And like I say, I'm gonna fall short of apologizing sometimes for, I just had, I don't know, I just, there's reasons, I guess, why my tempers or my patience aren't what they used to be, but thank you for the honor. Thank you for the honor. And thanks again to the people of the Second Ward. Thank you so much.
Any other comments from council members? In deference to seniority, Mr. Hookstra, is there a motion that you would be interested in making at this time?
I don't know, this is always Jay's thing, but...
No, I second it.
Are ya? Okay. Well, Mr. Mayor, I move that we adjourn.
Mr. Peters?
I second it.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all. (applause)